Good evening. At seven o'clock, we have a forum. Please rise to your seats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a full house tonight. Glad to see it.
Mr. President, if I may, our legal firm, Kayla Moody-Grant, is on video for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, the first item here, do I need three motions to amend the agenda or one motion to amend three items?
You can do one motion to amend all three of those items.
I would make a motion to amend with all three items.
All second. If I could, the amendment will include, for those that don't have agendas, we're adding the election of officers, Resolution One, 2025 encumbrances, and approval of amendments of the 1230. And this doesn't require a motion, but we are going to, in the agenda, move item F to D, D to E, and E to F. We need to do the conflict of interest forms prior to doing the cleaning contracts. That's all I got, sir.
Crystal, clear.
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Dowell, and a second by Mr. Chatham to amend the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is council organization. Kayla, you're up.
Hello, everyone. I just want to say, we did the election of officers at the last meeting. We did it by a ballot vote, and when I advised to do that, that was relying on Roberts rules. Since then, there is a statute that disallows secret ballot votes for final action, and so we would consider this to be a final action, so we think it's proper to redo the elections without a ballot vote.
Thank you.
So if you guys would like to start with nominations, like we did last time, Mr. Darrell, you can open nominations, take any nominations, and then close nominations and ask for a motion for president.
All right, I will open the floor for nominations for president.
I'll make a motion for Dave Potter.
Motion to nominate...
Oh, make a nomination for Dave Potter, sorry.
Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Do I have to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Dave Potter as council president.
Motion by Mr. Dowell, two seconds.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chatham. Carrie, will you take a roll?
Brett Dowell.
Aye.
Dave Potter.
Aye.
Greg Irving.
Aye.
Michael Chatham.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Yeah, and now we can turn it over to Mr. Potter.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is election of vice president. Shall I open for nominations for vice president?
Probably a nomination for Mr. Irving.
I'll make a nomination for Mike Chatham. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Can we take a roll call vote?
You'll need someone to make a motion for one of the nominees.
I'll make this pretty easy for you guys. Not too interested in being nice if Mike wants to do it. Congratulations.
I'll make a motion for Mike Chatham as vice president.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Mike Chatham, two seconds. Roll call vote.
Brett Dowell.
Aye.
Greg Irving.
Aye.
Mr. Gerald.
Aye.
Mike Chatham.
Aye.
Dave Potter.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is appointment of Department of Labor agents. There are no new council members this year. Each of us served in a capacity last year. That seemed to work well. All members have agreed to serve in the same capacity again, so we'll begin for 2025. It will be Greg Irving for clerks, Chris Gerald for fire, Mike Chatham for police, Brett Dawes for utilities, and I'll be with Public Works. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have four sets of minutes. The first one is the work-study session from December 18th, if everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the work-study, 1218 minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Making a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes for 1218.4.
Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Council meeting for December 18th. Second. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. And last is the meeting on December 30th.
Make a motion to approve December 30th meeting minutes.
Second. Any comments on that? Motion passes. Pardon? Pardon?
Motion seconded.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, thank you. Next, we have badge pinning. Chief Duncan.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilman. I come before you tonight again for another milestone in the Danville Fire Department. As tradition, they'll be starting when I got here, when I come off probation, do the badge pin. Mr. Gerald, if you take the wheel pin.
All right, good evening. Today marks a special day for our fire department and our community. With our newest firefighter, Cory Waters, you've chosen a path of service, courage, and dedication. Your training has prepared you for the challenges ahead, but it's your heart that will guide you through the toughest moments. As your badges pinned on you today, know that you're not just joining a department, you're joining a part of a family. A family that will have your back in the face of danger, celebrate your triumphs, and support you through the tough times. Wear your badge with pride, serve with honor, and always keep in mind why you chose this noble profession. Congratulations.
Mr. President, if we could, have some time for some pictures. Is there any family that would like to join about the rest of the fire staff, if you'd like to come up? Work family?
The next slide.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a police badge pinning. Chief Duncan.
Mr. President, House members, tonight I bring forth three individuals who've worked very hard to get where they're at, and I'm going to bring them up, and I'll turn it over to my ladies on, Mr. Chatham. Lieutenant Wilson, Sergeant Holler, and Sergeant Malina would come up with whoever's pending your badges. Mr. Chatham, they're all yours.
Aye. Good evening, everyone. Today marks a very special day for the Danville Police Department and our community. We gather to honor the dedication and achievements of three of our very own. Sergeant Kennedy Malina, Sergeant Quentin Holler, Lieutenant Chase Wilson, who've each chosen a path of service, courage, and commitment to protect and serve our town. Your training and experiences have prepared you for the challenges ahead, but it will be to heart that guides you through the toughest moments. As your new badges are pinned on you today, remember, you're not just stepping into new ranks, you're reaffirming your place in a family. Family stands shoulder to shoulder in the face of adversity, celebrates triumphs together, and supports each other through hardships. Wear these badges with pride, serve with honor, and never lose sight of why you answered this call to service. Congratulations, and thank you for your achievement and your dedication to our community.
This is why I said you should practice.
If any of the family wants to come up and take pictures, you're welcome to come on up a little closer. Everybody will have to use your zoom lens.
Thank you.
You guys want family pictures?
Can you tell us who is the first and second something, the people, when they vote? Can you tell us who they are? Thank you.
For those who came for the badge pinning, you're welcome to stay in the room for remainder of the meeting, but you're also welcome to leave if you wish. Mr. Morgan, did we ask if there were any public comments tonight?
We did not, but darn it.
Next on the item agenda is our board appointments. There are a number of these to go through. Should go relatively quickly if we happen to have the right number of people requesting to serve on the right number of boards, so hopefully they'll go fairly quickly. First up is plan commission. In the past, Michael Chatham and I have served in that capacity. We both agreed to continue again for 2025, so I would open the floor for nomination for plan commission.
I will nominate Dave Potter and Michael Chatham for white mist.
Second. Any other nomination? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is BCA. There's only one appointment there, and that is council president appointment. Randy Walsh served in that position before, agreed to serve again. I appoint Randy Walsh for the board of zoning appeals. Redevelopment commission. There are five positions there, three of which are council president appointments. For those, I appoint Ben Comer and David Glover, who have served in the past, and one new one, Tim McRoberts, who will be filling the one open seat. There are two positions for town council appointment. Those are the people that volunteered for that, are Master Stewart and Brad Legan, who have served in the past and are willing to continue for 2025. So I would open the floor for nominations there.
I say we nominate Brad Legan and Master Stewart for... RDC.
Nomination made by Michael Chatham, seconded by Brett Dawes. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is park board. There are two positions to be appointed there. Both are council appointments. Danielle Smith has agreed to serve as a new member of that committee, and Bill Sutton as a continuing member. So I would open the floor for nominations for our park board.
I think that's just your nomination, councilman.
It... We found out that statutorily, it needs to be a council appointment. I will change the verbiage on that next year for council.
Danielle Smith and Bill Sutton.
They do meet the political requirements. One is a Democrat, one is a Libertarian.
I will move slash nominate, I don't know if they're down at this point, Bill Sutton and Danielle Smith.
Second. Motion by Greg Irving, second by Chris Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is EMS board. In the past, Chris Gerald and Michael Chatham have served on that board, and both have agreed to continue for next year, so I would open the floor for nomination for EMS board.
Nominate Chris Gerald and Michael Chatham for EMS board.
Second. Nomination by Greg Irving, second by Brett Dawes. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is Hendrick County Economic Development Partnership. Greg Irving has served in that capacity in the past and agreed to serve again. So I would open the floor for nominations for that.
Greg Irving for the economic development position.
Second. Nomination by Michael Chatham, second by Chris Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is Hendrick County Recycling District. Brett Dawes served in that capacity before and agreed to serve again, so I would open the floor for nominations there.
I'm going to nominate Brett Dawes, second.
Motion by Greg Irving, second by Michael Chatham. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is Hendrick County Communication Board. Michael Chatham has served in that capacity before and agreed to serve again. I would open the floor for nominations there.
I'm going to nominate Michael Chatham to head on that board.
Second. Nomination by Greg Irving, second by Chris Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is Citizens Water Advisory Board. Matt Ellison has served in that capacity before and has agreed to serve again. So I would open the floor for nominations there.
Nominate Matt Ellison, second.
Nomination by Greg Irving, second by Brett Dawes. All in favor?
No. Chatham. Second, Chatham.
Second, sorry, second, Michael Chatham. Next up is tree advisory committee. I'm sorry, we didn't take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is tree advisory committee. There are three positions there. All three of the three deserve to serve again. Gary Hennel-Garnon, Steve Minchoff, and Sarah Wolf. So I would open the floor for nominations there.
I'll move to nominate Gary Hennel-Garnon, Steve Minchoff, and Sarah Wolf.
Second. Nomination by Greg Irving, second by Chris Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is Representative on Chamber of Commerce Board. Town manager Mike Morgan has served in that capacity before and agreed to serve again. So I would open it for nominations there.
I'll nominate Mark Morgan, second.
Nomination by Chris Gerald, second by Greg Irving. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is downtown Danville partnership. We have two positions there. Both are new positions. Greg Irving and Brett Dawes have agreed to serve in those positions, so I would... I would open the floor for nominations there.
I'll nominate Greg Irving and Brett Dawes for...
No, I'm sorry, my mistake. My mistake. Lisa Trenet and Brett Dawes. My mistake, I apologize. So we have another board. Right, there's privacy there.
I will nominate Brett Dawes and Lisa Trenet to serve on the downtown Danville partnership, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the, I think last is the citizen advisory board. I'm trying to my sheet there. Citizen advisory board is basically one that has never met, but nonetheless, with the contract with Waste Management, we need to fill it in the past, but I, Will Lacy, and Madison Henderson have served on that. We need one new appointment, and Danielle Smith has agreed to fill that capacity, so I would open the floor for nominations there.
I'll move to nominate Danielle Smith to the citizens' advisory board, second.
I would nominate all four.
Oh, and I will also move to nominate, scratch that first motion, new motion. I will move to nominate Dave Potter, Will Lacy, Madison Henderson, and Danielle Smith, and Justin Buster to the citizens' advisory board.
Justin Buster is appointed by the Waste Management.
Yeah.
But just the four for us.
All right, the four. Danielle Smith, Madison Henderson, Will Lacy, Dave Potter to the citizens' advisory board.
Second. Nomination by Greg Irving, second by Chris Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that will leave that for us.
Mr. President, I'll make the notifications for all people who were appointed to those positions.
The next item on the agenda, we've moved up the conflict of interest forms.
These are forms that... The individuals have filled out, two employees, where they allow cities to perform the cleaning for the services for the town, and then one for...
Michael Chatham.
Michael Chatham, and then do we have one for Cory?
Look at that.
Okay, so it's the two cleaning services and Michael Chatham. So you have...
And then they need to be voted on individually, is that correct?
That is correct. You can both to accept each one.
I will move to approve the conflict of interest disclosure from Adam Murray.
Second. Motion by Greg Irving, second by Brett Dawes. All in favor?
Aye.
I will move to accept the conflict of interest disclosure statement very often.
Second. Motion by Greg Irving, second by Chris Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
I have Mr. Chatham's, if you need to review it, if you'd like to review it. It's the same thing as it did last year. So, it's not all there.
The standard language?
Yep.
I probably should look at it before I make a motion, just the lawyer in me is telling me to be done first.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
Thank you.
You said it this way.
I will move to approve the conflict of interest disclosure statement. Michael Chatham. You guys can all make a second.
Motion by Greg Irving, second. Second by Brett Dawes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're for the cleaning contract with AWR Cleaning Services.
Yes, this is the cleaning contract for AWR for the town hall. Needs to be...
I will move to accept the cleaning contract. What is the contract? Oh, there's the cleaning contract from AWR Cleaning Services.
Second. Motion by Greg Irving, second by Chris Gerald. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Council, okay with the clerk trainer being the signature on this?
That one, yes. The next one probably not. Next one is very often, I'll move to approve the cleaning contract from BL3.
Second. Motion made by Greg Irving, second by Michael Chatham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Council's okay with me citing this then?
Yes, please. Next item is net digital forms for tree.
These are forms that need to be completed annually. The council and myself.
And over the ones that Mr. Morgan handed out at the beginning of the year.
Yes. And I don't believe when we vote on those, it's just letting it know. Letting it know.
Do you have all those back, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Last agenda item, resolution for encumbrances, Resolution One, 2025.
This here is to encumber money from the 2024 budget to the 2025. You would have saw when there was for physical quarter master training, new equipment for the fire department.
Was this on our packet?
I'm sorry?
Is this document on our packet anywhere?
This would have been in the 1230 packet. The only thing that changed on it was the resolution number.
Do you need copies, sir? I think I looked at it last time, I didn't see it, I jumped out on my... It's the same one.
Did you vote?
Yeah.
We'll have copies for the council in just a minute.
Are there any encumbrances that we need to know about that are at ordinary, or does anything change from the 30th?
Nothing's changed on it from the 30th. The only difference is the resolution number. It looks to me like treadmills, laptops, uniforms, clothing, fire gear, to mannequins, tent and supplies, fire gear, and angle grinder blades, mill and resurface, tree inventory, and urban forestry management plan, Ellis Park parking spaces, and rental for four porta pints.
Do you want to wait for the documentation to just accept you? It's not me. Well, you're awesome. I'll make a motion to tell you this. I will move to approve Resolution One, 2025, encumbrances.
Second. Motion by Greg Irving, second by Chris Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, staff comments? Any staff comments?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Dawes.
Thanks to Andy, Eric, and the team. It's the most snow we've had at least a handful of years that I can remember, so... Appreciate the long days, and I know it's not necessarily fun working the upper management, but generally appreciate it. And as to public safety as well, navigating. Thank you all.
Mr. Chatham.
Just want to, once again, backstreet department, same thing, you guys did a great job. Want to thank Chief Duncan and Chief Delton for getting those guys, training them up, and putting them in the positions that they're in. So to help the community, so I can take that opportunity, appreciate it.
Yeah, I just want to say, thank you, town, thank you, council, thank you, employees, for allowing me to sit in the middle with the little hammer the last year. I think we've done a lot of good things, we've made a lot of good progress. We got a lot of amazing people that we work with, so I hope the momentum continues to move in the direction that we've worked the last 12 months on. Thank you.
Erby. A couple of comments from my end. I met on Monday of last week with Representative Greg Sherwold. And again yesterday with Representative Jeff Thompson. They were both very encouraging and supportive of our position and thinking that we would come out with a favorable position on the discussion within DOT on the Kroger sinkhole, and they were very supportive of some other issues that discussed. Representative Thompson did review with me his thinking on property tax reform. It seems fairly clear, and he's fairly confident that there will be some potentially significant changes in this legislative session that could have a significant impact on how funding works going forward. So there's certainly a level of uncertainty. I asked him if he would share his draft legislation with me, and he wouldn't do it just yet, but he said it would become a public, very sensitive report, seeing what that is. He did tell me that what he's proposing would totally eliminate the comment, the concept of circuit grid credits. That issue would be gone, so I'm not sure mechanically how it's all going to work. Next, just a reminder, our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, February 22nd. But in advance, that meeting is the first of a series of meetings with the Guard of Fire Territory. Chief Duncan, do you want to make any comments on that? Meeting will be at 5:30 at the Danville Royal Theater. It'll be the first public meeting in a series of meetings on that subject. Just a comment to our street department, I went out for a ride in a snowplow truck with Aaron on Sunday. We went down by Andrew Erby's mailbox for him while we were out. In my last comment, I just want to say, wish everybody, all of our personnel and families, loved ones, a healthy, happy, and successful 2025. Thank you very much. Claim docket, two claim dockets. Kerry, would you explain why we have two claim dockets?
So, we didn't have a meeting on December 30th, but we had a packet prepared for there. So I didn't want to remove those and redo them, so we just left that as is. So that's the first one, which is the dollar amount of the $1,172,000 one. The other one is for the checks that were done after the December 30th meeting.
Motion for claim docket.
I will move to approve the first claim docket, the amount of $1,172,518.06.
Second. Motion by Greg Erby, second by Chris Gerald. All in favor?
Aye. I will now move to approve the second claim docket, the amount of $126,382.06.
Second. Motion by Greg Erby, second by Chris Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
And hairdo docket.
I will move to approve hairdo docket.
Second. Motion by Greg Erby, second by Chris Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for Gerald. So moved. Second. Motion by Chris Gerald, second by Brett Dawg. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.